Good morning, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Thursday, May 20th, 2021. It is 9:03 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Carolina Mihia. We have County Manager Ramiro Chavez. The topic for today's work session is the State of the Prosecuting Attorney's Office and informational briefing to the Board. So we have our county prosecutor, John Toonheim, and key members of his team that I'm sure he will introduce. The public will be able to follow along through the county YouTube channel or through a conference line option at 360-252-9020. The PIN is 1234 for that. Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell has joined us. And County Manager, does this go straight to our county prosecutor?
Yeah, just a couple of words. I have been talking with John Toonheim in the past. He has given a presentation to the Board in terms of the state of the prosecuting attorney's office. And I think this is a good opportunity to hear from him, you know, particularly related to the impacts of the Blake decision as well as the backlog. The COVID-19 emergency has created on the whole law and justice system. So I myself looking forward to hear from John. So welcome, John.
Thanks, Ramiro, and thank you, members of the Board, for giving me a little bit of time. I am going to just spend a little bit of time doing the state of the prosecutor's office, but also I'm hoping that we can reserve a little time for some question-answer dialogue too, because I want to make sure that I'm answering questions that you might have. So yes, I will introduce the members of my team that are with us, starting with Christie Peters. Christie's our Chief of Staff. I know that you know Christie, but I'm going to do the introductions anyway. Christie, fresh back from visiting her son who just graduated from college. So she was off to Hawaii to watch her son graduate. And I'm sure she's now refreshed and ready to dig back in. I say that, I haven't even talked for such long.
Although, I have to add a caveat to that, John, and to the commissioners. I'm still on Hawaii time. I got in at midnight and it's 6:05 for me right now. So if I'm drinking a lot of caffeine, that is the end.
Congratulations.
My dad begged me to go to University of Hawaii. He tried to bribe me with buying me a condo and all this stuff, and I wanted to do it. And he is very jealous of you right now.
It was great. It was great. And they actually allowed two people per graduate. They changed from Zoom to a hybrid. So we actually got to be there, which was great.
Awesome. I also want to introduce another person I know that you know, and that's Heidi Prohod, our Administrative Services Manager. She's really the backbone of the office in terms of the day-to-day taking care of people, making sure everybody's got what they need. She likes to go by the informal title "all-around helper person," which is a good way of describing her role in our office. And then Susan Strong, my executive assistant, who basically makes sure that my life has some structure to it, my professional life has some structure to it, and that I show up where I'm supposed to show up at the right time and keeps me organized and actually supports the entire executive team of the office as well. So I thought I'd spend the first few minutes talking to you about the challenges that we are facing that Ramiro mentioned. I will say that one of the reasons I asked for this time was, as Ramiro alluded to, some conversations that he and I have been having, where he has been really encouraging me to do this, to try to schedule some periodic time with the Board to keep you kind of more updated on an ongoing basis. And so my intent is to try to do this maybe quarterly, or you know, at very least, maybe three times a year. But just to be able to come in and answer questions every couple of months about what's going on and keep you apprised of that situation. So that's my goal going forward with these types of meetings. And I also didn't prepare anything like highly structured. I don't have a slide deck or anything like that because I wanted to also be able to create some opportunity for just dialogue and question and answer. But I do want to tell you a little bit about some of the challenges that we're facing right now, but also share with you the strategic plan, some of the elements of the strategic plan. We are in the final stages of implementing as we get ready for COVID recovery. It seemed like a good, not just a good time, but a necessary thing to do as we're coming out of COVID and our landscape has changed so drastically as a result. Our first challenge right now that we're really facing is caseload. And it may seem somewhat counterintuitive because the activity in the courts has slowed way down during COVID because the court was so limited in the kinds of hearings that it could do and really started to focus and prioritize only on cases where the and I'm obviously focused in the criminal division right now, where a person was being held in the county jail, either pretrial or posttrial. But on the other side of the equation, the cases kept coming in. So part of our challenge is the fact that we still had cases coming in to the system, but we weren't disposing of as many cases because there was no trials and very limited ability to do hearings. And so what we've seen is our caseload rise over time to the point now where basically every criminal deputy in the office is at or above capacity for caseload. Our average number of cases right now, a felony deputy is carrying is 67 open cases set for trial. That varies a little bit. The first look load is down, as you might imagine, because the first look focuses more on the lower-level crimes that we haven't been able to get to and prosecute as much. Domestic violence, on the other hand, their average caseload is above 80 right now. 80 cases set for trial per deputy prosecutor for the felony side of it. As of yesterday, when I ran the numbers, my best estimate is that we have about 890 felonies set for trial right now total in the entire felony division. The misdemeanor has been operating a little bit differently because I know, at least some of you know, because I know you've worked in the court system, the misdemeanor cases, many of those get charged by citation with law enforcement directly. And so they're not coming through our office and they're going right into the court, directly into the court system. So for that reason, we don't have quite as big a backlog. I'll talk about that in a minute. But the same phenomenon has been happening because we haven't been able to have trials and cases haven't been resolving as fast, but yet cases are coming into the system. The caseloads have grown there. Our average caseload right now for a misdemeanor deputy is 476 open cases. So almost 500 cases per deputy prosecutor open, which gives us a total of just over 2,300 cases set for trial right now or in a pre-trial status in District Court. So those numbers may or may not mean anything to you, but what I'm trying to convey is we are really at or above capacity in every place in the criminal division right now because of the inability to move cases through the system like we would normally do. So that's our first challenge is just that everybody in the office is at or above capacity in terms of caseload. But the next one is backlog, which is something, you know, I've been talking about with some of you informally and which Ramiro mentioned. The backlog comes from, again, us being unable to really start the process on a lot of referrals that come into the office that are nonviolent in nature, where the person is not going to necessarily be detained while the case was pending. And so it covers a substantial number of property-related crimes, burglaries, and crimes of that nature. Things that aren't necessarily involving a crime against a person like an assault or a robbery or something of that nature. Right now, and I alluded to this a little bit yesterday in our elected officials meeting, the last count I have, best estimate, is that we're just slightly over 1,400 felony referrals that have not yet been screened or charged. And just to make sure that there's clarification on that, we have already declined a substantial number, if not all, of the possession of controlled substance referrals that would have been impacted by Blake. So that's already happened. So the 1,400 number is not necessarily counting cases that would go, that would get now declined because of the Blake decision. On the other side of it, with the misdemeanors, I told you that that's different, right? And it comes out in the numbers because the estimate I have as of yesterday was about 280 misdemeanors that are unfiled and just waiting for screening and review. And most of those, I think, will be cases where there's a good potential of a diversion because in District Court, the focus of our, and the priority of our practice is primarily on domestic violence. And so those cases, by definition, get filed very, very soon, if not immediately, because of the nature of those cases. Or impaired drivers. And same thing, we don't let impaired driving cases sit around. We try to take action on those as soon as possible. So this 280 cases, I would surmise that the bulk of those is not in those two categories, which means they get deprioritized. So that's a look at our backlog. If you look at that felony backlog of 1,400 cases, on an average year, non-COVID standard operation, we would look at filing around 2,000 cases a year for our entire felony division. So that's about roughly two-thirds of one year's worth of work without any other cases coming in. So if cases just stopped coming in, it would take us a good nine months to wade through that using every deputy prosecutor in the criminal division that I have. So I hope that gives you a sense of kind of what we're facing as we move into this recovery phase from COVID. One of the challenges that we're also looking at that is becoming more pronounced now with the backlog that we have, and that is that we have no investigative, in-house investigative support at all. And as I've started talking with more of my colleagues, both around the state and even similarly sized offices across the country, what I'm finding is we're getting to about the size now of an office where we should be looking at having some in-house investigative support in terms of a prosecutor's investigator. These are folks that, they're different. They're not first responders. They don't go out and do first investigations. What they're primarily tasked with is doing follow-up to law enforcement and contacting and locating witnesses when the need arises and, you know, taking supplemental statements or if defense witnesses are identified during discovery, being able to go out and do interviews with defense witnesses, things like that. And what we're finding is with the law enforcement capacity that's out there right now, we're not able to rely on law enforcement to do that kind of work for us as much as we historically have been able to do, or it gets deprioritized and we can't get it done timely, which just further delays the case. And so one of my priorities moving forward is to start thinking about and talking with all of you about what some investigative support might look like for the prosecutor's office. And I've got some ideas around that. Again, this isn't an ask at all. I'm just talking about this as a potential need. And then the last challenge I want to talk about, other than Blake, is some of the things that have been increasingly challenging for our support staff. And just so you have an idea, our support staff is responsible for all of the document production that goes on in our cases. And so, for instance, when we charge a felony case, there's a whole packet of documents that are produced as a result of that charging decision that is made, and all of those have to be carefully drafted and reviewed and so forth. They do all of our discovery management, and it's literally thousands and thousands and thousands of pages now of discovery that's going through our support staff and having to manage that and make decisions about, you know, whether certain redactions might need to be made, things like that as discovery comes through. And the one thing I wanted to mention about discovery is, just so you have a little bit clearer picture, it's a little bit different than, say, when Commissioner Edwards was sheriff back in the day where primarily our discovery was the police reports. With the technology advances we've seen in the last 10 years, I've come to realize now, having done a couple of murder trials myself over the last couple of years, that discovery has substantially changed because we now have significantly more photographs being taken because officers can take photographs on their phone. And they do, they take many more photographs, which is a good thing in terms of the quality of the investigation, but it adds significantly to the discovery. Virtually every business has surveillance video. Surveillance video has become a big part of discovery, and those are big electronic packets to go through and to manage, and then audio recordings as well. And then the other thing that's really changed in terms of discovery is investigative results from phones, cell phones. A cellphone is a major, major piece of evidence now in so many cases because it can give some really good valuable information to investigators. The murder case I just tried last month, we had thousands of text messages to go through that came from the suspect's phone and other phones that he was corresponding with that, you know, just adds tremendously to the discovery. So we're getting huge packets of cellphone data, text messages, all of those kinds of things that need to be managed. And then the final thing for our support staff is the increasing burden of public records. And I don't need to go into that in depth because I know you know what that amounts to, but we consistently see increasing requests for public records on the criminal side of our house, especially people asking for criminal files. And the burden of that falls on our support staff to do that as well. So the final thing I would just wanted to mention was Blake, and I want to say I appreciate the Board considering and authorizing some additional project help for us on the Blake front. We've had to, over the last few weeks, significantly deprioritize Blake. We've only been processing cases under Blake where we have somebody who is eligible to be released from custody or to be released from some kind of probation or supervision, trying to do all of those cases first. So those have continued to go, but to just go back and do resentencings and fix people's records and so forth where it doesn't impact their custody status, we had to put those on the back burner for the last few weeks while we've been trying to deal with all of these other issues, which were compounded, as I mentioned yesterday in our elected officials meeting, were compounded by the fact that we've had three deputy prosecutors leave recently for other opportunities. One to the Pierce County Prosecutor's Office, one to the City of Olympia Prosecutor's Office, and one to the State Attorney General's Office. So we're trying to manage and reassign all of their cases to other deputies. So I don't want to spend the entire time just talking to you about how hard our life is because, as you can see, we've got lots of challenges going on. Things are really, really difficult for us right now. And Christie and I are spending a lot of time working with all of our staff, trying to make sure people are taking care of themselves, taking care of each other, and managing the stress that they're under, and really trying to prioritize that as well, with, I think, some degree of success. But I just also wanted to spend a few minutes talking about the strategic plan that we're putting some final touches on to look at rolling out as we start to come out of COVID. The label that I put on this strategic plan is seeking justice, which is obviously a statement directly related to our mission in the criminal division. If you asked any prosecutor, what's their mission, the word "seeking justice" or the phrase "seeking justice" is going to come up at some point. And so that's why I selected that phrase, because what we're doing is trying to adapt our formula for justice to kind of current times and especially in light of Blake and COVID and all of the challenges that we're facing. So I just want to mention a few highlights of this, and if, as we roll this out, perhaps even if I do this again in a couple of months, we'll have this fully implemented and I can share even more details with you. But here's kind of a broad overview. We do everything in the criminal division with two major goals in mind, two kind of mission-related goals. One is protect the community. Public safety is something we talk about frequently when we're talking about criminal justice. I know you know that, and that remains, you know, one of what I call our infinite goals, the things we are constantly working at and always striving for. The second is to uphold the rule of law, recognizing that we are a society of laws. That is how we manage ourselves as a community of people, and that upholding the rule of law is a critical part of any organized society and democracy. So we take those very seriously, and those obviously remain our infinite goals, the things that dominate thematically through everything that we do. So with that in mind, we've talked about some specific strategic goals going forward as we come out of COVID. Again, kind of updating this idea of what does justice mean in current times with everything that we're dealing with. So the more specific goals in seeking justice is, one, to increase the opportunities for diversions. And I know that you all know that we're working on implementing not only the diversions that we currently have, but some even, so a couple of other additional diversion opportunities, such as lead, the law enforcement diversion. That's moving forward now with significant momentum. And we're in the final stages of implementing a pre-charge diversion through our pretrial services program focused on, that's because it's TST-funded, those are focused specifically on folks dealing with substance use disorder and/or mental illness. And so it's a treatment-based, therapeutic-based diversion. And then we maintain all of our other diversion programs, like our program that we have with Friendship, who's a nonprofit diversion provider that we've worked with for literally decades, and then our therapeutic courts, which I'm still proud to say, I think this county has one of the strongest portfolios of therapeutic courts in the state. That's just my personal opinion, and I say that even as the current president of the State Drug Court Association. So increasing the diversion opportunities and diversions is one of our goals. Along with that is kind of a counter, or I should say, a secondary goal of reducing the use of incarceration for nonviolent offenders. And so built into that, that idea is the goal to deprioritize the use of jail time and incarceration and approach those cases from more of a rehabilitative approach to try to reduce recidivism and not just cycle people through our county jail until they finally get enough criminal history that they go off to the state prison system. And so that is a cultural change in criminal justice and a focus that we're putting on. And along with that also is the reduced use of money bail, particularly in those, again, nonviolent cases where we're not as concerned about the risk to the community. And the project that's most facilitating that right now that we're a part of, as you know, is the APPR project through the Arnold Ventures, which is the collaborative project we have going on with the courts, public defender, law enforcement, other stakeholders around really reinventing our pretrial justice system. Our next goal in our Seeking Justice Initiative is reducing risk of disparity and disproportionality, particularly based on race. So right now I have an internal work group in our office made up of representatives of our civil and criminal division, victim advocates, lawyers, support staff, a real cross-section of the entire office that is looking through our criminal practices and procedures and also analyzing data to look for risk points in our system that might contribute to any kind of racial disparity that is happening in our justice system overall with an aim to identify those and reduce that risk. So that's our focus on trying to take some actions internally in the prosecutor's office to directly respond to issues of racial disparity. And then finally, a goal of creating more robust data, keeping more robust data, and increasing transparency for what we're doing as an office and how that might contribute or factor into the criminal justice system. A big piece of this is built into our implementation of our new case management system, which we are scheduled to go live with in July, e-Prosecutor. And at the same time, the Public Defender's Office is implementing e-Defender. Those two systems will talk to each other, so that'll really help keep us, I think, aligned in the kinds of data we're looking at and how we manage our cases and our discovery and so forth. But to the data end of it, I'm putting a big focus, as we implement e-Prosecutor, on making sure that we are thinking very intentionally about what data we're going to keep and put into it, what kind of reports we want to be able to get out, and how we can use those to be more transparent to the community about what's happening in our office and in the system overall. So that's a big focus on that. And there are a number of strategies then that go along with those goals and some of which I've already talked about, like lead, APPR. We're implementing a paradigm, for lack of a better word, that I call goal-focused prosecution, which means that a deputy prosecutor should be able to articulate a specific goal that they have. a specific goal that they have in mind in any case that they decide to file charges on. And particularly in cases where we might be looking at a rehabilitative or a therapeutic result as opposed to an incarceration result and being very clear about where they are trying to focus their resources in that regard. And then finally, we're starting to think creatively about how to on the transparency issue, engage with the community. So once we have, we are starting to keep this data and we have the data, the next issue is how do we communicate that data to the community in a way that really gives them a, a clear idea of what's happening. So much of criminal justice is we have our own cultural language, for lack of a better way to say it, right? The, the general public may or may not understand, and so we're trying to think about how do we communicate data in a way that that everybody can better understand what's happening. And that's our, kind of a community engagement strategy. Things like data dashboards that might be able to show very clearly what's happening in certain aspects of it. And then I've already talked about adding investigative capacity. And I just want to wrap up by saying that I'm really focused even more on that now coming out of COVID because some of these referrals that I've talked about have been sitting on a shelf for eight, nine, 10 months. And so as you know, witnesses lose touch, they're not as easy to find. And being able to have some investigative support to track people down and freshen up cases so that we could actually move forward, I think is going to be more important coming out of COVID. So I, you know, I've been talking for a little over a half hour. I think that's where I'd like to wrap it up, but I'd love to hear your questions or comments or, you know, just engage in any kind of conversation that would be helpful for you to better understand what's happening with our office.
Sounds good. Yeah, we've got a few. Commissioner McGee, start with you.
Thank you. Thank you prosecutor for just the status update today. I guess my question is, moving forward with this, I mean, where, where do you see your office going with, with Blake? I'll go with the COVID first. With how COVID has impacted your office, are there some practices that your office plans to implement long-term, especially when it comes to advocating for? Are there any practices that you plan on implementing long-term?
Yeah, particularly the ones that I've mentioned where we're going to put a higher focus on looking for potential diversion alternatives or non-incarceration alternatives. You, you know, you know that during COVID, we managed to reduce substantially reduce our jail population. To the point where you know, I, I think a lot of the population management issues that we were struggling with before COVID are, if not resolved, you know, much, much less. So a kind of underwritten in, in this lower use of incarceration goal is to try to maintain that jail population at its current state, even going out of COVID. And really focusing on only having folks in custody who pose a, a risk to the community and, you know, being that advocate to protect the community, but not not be quite as focused on the use of incarceration where it's not necessary. I think that's a big one that's going to continue beyond COVID. And then our, as we increase these diversion opportunities, I hope that what that does is start to help us better manage the caseload of cases that we'll need to actually file and proceed with prosecution. If we can, you know, off-ramp a number of cases before they get too far into the criminal justice system, before they penetrate too far, then that allows us to focus our resources, more specifically on cases involving violence or, you know, substantial inflicted harm, things like that. So I see that as being a, a kind of a fundamental change that happened during COVID that's going to continue on. And then we haven't been using this during COVID, but the technology piece is going to be huge in terms of coming out of COVID and our ability to use our technology and to keep our data. And so I, those are, I think, three of the biggest examples that first come to mind of things that we've been working on during COVID that will continue throughout the recovery. And frankly, I, as I, I see this, I've been talking to my deputies about seeking justice as not just a strategic plan, but a, a cultural shift, a, a, a different paradigm of prosecution.
Thank you.
Can we share our words?
John, would you be keeping track of points for the sentencing guidelines even though you've put somebody through diversion? So say diversion wasn't working, would they, would they still get points assessed so that the community doesn't have to start all over again if they're not following along properly?
Well, the, the short answer to that commissioner is no. That's one of the, that's one of the aspects of diversion. And there's two edges to that sword, if you will, because a diversion offers a person an opportunity to keep something off of their record, which if they're successful can really help them even be more successful, because they don't, they're not walking around now with that criminal history record. The downside is, of course, they're not convicted, and if they're not convicted, it is not a point for S R A. That's that's in the law, that's built into the law. You accumulate points through convictions. And so what that means for a deputy prosecutor is, again, we, we will be tracking diversions, obviously. We'll have the data to know what's going on there. And that will be part of the, you know, really the discretionary review of a case where if a deputy prosecutor sees that there are diversions that have been tried and failed in the past, then their, their goal in the, in the case may shift more towards a, a stronger measure. And I also want to say that the way we're approaching diversion, this is a little bit off your question, but I think it's important for the community to know. The way we're approaching this diversion is we're trying to, to create diversion, a kind of a portfolio diver, of diversion opportunities where we can even ramp up the degree of accountability within a diversion if, if things aren't working. So we might have somebody say at a low, at the lowest structure and accountability model, which will be probably the law enforcement, the lead diversion, which has, you know, basically if a person enrolls with that, then we're done with them. We're not looking at a criminal sanction any longer at that. But if that doesn't work, we can ramp up to maybe a pre-charge diversion where somebody actually is charged with the crime, but is given the opportunity to earn their way to a dismissal or ultimately to a drug court, which is, as you know, highly structured, highly accountable form of diversion. So even within the diversion portfolio, we're trying to create opportunities where we can ramp up that structure and that accountability as needed. But eventually, if, if we're not successful, we're back in traditional prosecution. But there, there may not be points there that recognize that unless the person was actually, if they failed the diversion, they were convicted of that, which would happen in some instances. So for instance, if somebody fails drug court, the result of that is their case goes back into the system and they are generally convicted because they've had to stipulate to their, to, to their guilt, more or less, as part of that process before that. So it's a nuanced answer, I know, and there, there is, there's an upside and a downside to it. And I hope I answered your question. I'm happy to follow up if there's anything that wasn't clear about that.
On domestic violence and D W I, are any of those folks incarcerated or are they all out in the community?
It depends. As I, you know, I had a law professor in law school tell me the answer to every legal question is it depends. And so I constantly go back to that, but it really does. So as you know, there's a wide, when you say domestic violence, there's a wide variety of different kinds of cases that might come in with that domestic violence tag. If somebody is, in our view, a threat to the community or a threat to a particular victim, then our advocacy will shift to having them detained or at least on very, very strict conditions if they're in the community that would keep them, you know, reduce risk to that victim. There are other cases where we have less concern about that and they might be out on more standard conditions. Same with D U Is. If we've got a DUI that we look at as being high-risk, the person is a chronic DUI person, or they have a very high B A C indicating that they are perhaps a, a chronic consumer of alcohol or drugs and you know, there was significant impairment, their probability of being held in custody goes up kind of proportional to that. And the, and the court seemed to follow that as well. At the end of the day, all we do is make a recommendation and ultimately it's a judicial decision, but we try to do things in a way that we feel well-aligned with what the court wants to do as well.
I guess I'd just like to end with, I'll just make a comment on this, that I feel that the community still deserves protection. And I, I really do think that I'd like to hear from your office or yourself about what it would take to alleviate the backlog of all those cases that are there you know, but for COVID-19. I mean, if it is a nexus to that, then I think you're eligible for funding from that CARES money to solve that problem for the community. So I don't know what that would take and, but say it was three or four F T Es or something that we're going to try and alleviate that backlog, and maybe those F T Es would have to have an ending date on their employment or something. I, I don't, you know, or eventually maybe we could figure out a way to hire them, but I really do think-
Can I take that, could I take that for Commissioner Edwards? Because I've been working a little bit on that. Commissioner Edwards, I, I've been in contact with my counterparts in other prosecutors' offices King County, Snohomish County, Kitsap, Pierce. And essentially what I would like to present and on behalf of John in our office is actually a chart of different options that the commissioners can look at, of what approach they want to take regarding the COVID backlog. And that's essentially what's been done at, at several other counties in Washington for, specifically for the COVID as well as the Blake backlog. And what we're going to be putting together, I understand, I think Robin has asked us to have that to her by June 1st, we'll be working on to show you, you know, if we had X amount of support, we could get this backlog done by this time and by, you know, give the, the commissioners options to look at so that there's some flexibility with the understanding that things are going to be slower if there's less capacity, but things could be quicker if there's, you know, more capacity and maybe you want to go in the middle. But at least to give you an idea of what needs to be done, because supporting what, what John outlined, if we were to stop everything today, we know right now it would take at least a year with no new cases with our full capacity of staff right now to address the, the backlog. We're trying to obviously look somewhere, you know, to be able to address new crimes that are happening now for public safety, but also address the, the older crimes that are, that are still there in the backlog. So I don't know if that answers your question, but hopefully by June 1st, you'll have a better idea of what are some options you have on behalf of the county for public safety.
Okay, thank you.
So and I'll just jump in too. We have asked everyone in the law and justice sector to come up with a estimate, much like we gave you on Blake, where you saw the impact across the, the sector of government. We've asked them to do the same thing with the caseload backlog due to COVID. And I agree, the way to pay for it is with the Rescue Act money.
Okay, thank you, Robin. John, have you had a chance to consider sort of the post-Blake direction of drug court in terms of whether we can expand? You know, I don't know what the thought is of expanding the eligible offenses or removing some of the exemptions or will it need to spill into district court somehow? Because that's where there'll be, you know, drug possession prosecutions. I'm not sure. You know, I just, it's a lot, it's a, it's a big program and it's a very successful program and I want to keep it successful, but also be responsive to the community that we're thinking through the new changes.
Yeah, I have spent some time thinking about this commissioner, and I'll tell you that I have absolutely no concern that we will be able to continue to utilize our drug court and the other therapeutic courts in the, in the way that they're intended. The reality is we had already begun shifting away from using drug court for simple possession cases. There were simple possession cases that were still in drug court. Because what we're really looking at is, as I, as I was talking about, we, you know, we kind of look at our different diversions as a continuum, and the drug court is being, is, is the place now where we're really looking at what we identify as high-risk, high-need cases. This is national best practice that's going on now, that drug courts, the best return on investment in a drug court is through the, the use of that court for high-risk, high-need cases. And so what we're really talking about there is focusing on people who are at a high risk of recidivism regardless of what kind of crime we're looking at. Now statute actually bars us from looking at drug court for violent crimes and sex crimes and, you know, things like that. And there are other alternatives for those, right? We have, I know you know, we have the special offender, special sex offender alternative for certain sex cases and we have other approaches for other kinds of cases. And in some cases, you know, as I, I think you will recognize, some cases we do need to incarcerate people. That's the nature of the system. To get to the bottom line is, we had already shifted away and I see the drug court now being utilized for folks that are high-risk, high-need involving a wide variety of criminal conduct. But most of that being either very low-level violence or probably more prominently property. So the, the folks who are committing chronic burglaries, the, the folks who are chronically committing a commercial retail shoplifting, where they're out there committing these crimes to support their habit, and there's a, there's a nexus to their substance use disorder and, you know, the therapeutic approach is the best public safety approach because they're actually safer if we can get them treated long, you know, long-term than just, you know, putting somebody in in, in jail for a short period of time as well. So that had already started to shift pre-COVID and this kind of relates even back to Commissioner McGee's question. That's another practice that's going to continue moving forward is utilizing drug court for high-risk, high-need with a variety of different kinds of offenses. The possession cases, now that that is going to be a misdemeanor, I see those as being diverted in a much different way. Those are going to be, I think the cases we're going to look at for lead quite often and/or for the pre-charge diversion program out of district court. And so I would, I would be surprised if we had a possession case that we really felt was appropriate for drug court in the long term. I think we'd be, we'd be prioritizing drug courts to folks who are committing other types of crimes and actually inflicting harm as a result of their substance use disorder.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you about your point on bail, money bail. And I'm just wondering, so I know, you know, I kind, I know and I think the board knows what the A P P R project is doing. And I'm just wondering, like, what's your vision there? Like, what do you see as the kind of path forward from that project towards some reforming? Sort of bail, like, what's it going to look like? Your, your regulations will change, the law will change? Sort of bail, like, what's it going to look like? Your regulations will change, the law will change, the, what's going to change?
Yeah, I think if there's going to, this is going to be kind of a phased approach. I think what you're going to do is you're going to see an evolution in. Over a period of time of how we do pre-trial justice in Thurston County and actually across the state. I know a lot of people are interested in going right to legal changes and eliminating the use of money bail. That is a significant. Hurdle, I think in the legislature and in part because. There are, there's language in our constitution which lends itself to money bail. So we might not, we not, might not just be talking about statutory changes. We might need to actually talk about a constitutional amendment. That's a big undertaking. So that's a longer term vision. If, if I had my, if I had a magic wand and I could just. You know, change the way we do bail right now, I, I can tell you personally, I'd eliminate the use of money bail. I'd give judges authority to hold people who are high risk to the community. And otherwise to presumptively release people. Pre-trial who can be appropriately managed in the community in terms of their safety. So the way this evolves is I think we continue to. Strengthen and. Improve our pre-trial services department. We, I, I'm. I'm in some ways astounded how far we've come in the last few years with our pre-trial services. A big. Part of that goes to Mary Ann Clear, the director there, but, but really the vision, I think of every criminal justice person in Thurston County. Supporting that, that, that department has really, really come along. So we continue to support that, strengthen that. What, what that allows us to do is to. Have the kinds, the kind of. Monitoring and reminders and assurances where we can allow more people to be released pending trial. And be ensured that they're not going to go out and commit other crimes. And that they're going to show up for court, which are the two major issues that we're routinely dealing with. So while, when that happens, I think then what you start to see is as the system starts to trust that more and more. And that means prosecutors and judges, as we start to kind of trust that more and more. You'll see our bail recommendations reduce over time to the point where we would be recommending. Recognizance release in more and more and more cases, but, but specifically asking for. You know, conditions of release to make sure that the person. Isn't a risk to the community and comes back for court. And so the use of money bail starts to reduce just naturally as we start to. Agree more to recognizance releases. And we start to reserve our bail requests to the court for only folks who we feel are too dangerous to. Be in the community without some additional assurance such as money bail. So I see that as kind of evolving and then eventually. I, I, I do think this state is, I'm convinced the state is going to head eventually to a point where we don't have money bail anymore. I'm not sure that's going to happen during the existing time of my career. I, I can. I'm going to work on it and I, I kind of hope that it does. But it's, that's the long game in all of this, in my, in my view.
Got it. Thank you. I'm going to try to squeeze one more question in. Before our time's up. You mentioned the, the data that you're working on and trying to figure out. You know, what, what to collect and what to, you know, how to manage that with your new system. And I'm just. I had thought I had heard that you had engaged with one of the, sort of the, one of those groups out there that kind of helps folks with this. And I just wondered if that was true and. And if that was useful or, or is there collaboration there or what's going on?
Yeah, there's a couple of sources that we're looking at for, to, to, to provide some technical assistance. There is an organization called. I think it's prosecutorialmeasures.org. It's a organization out of Florida. That's. I think it's a collaboration between some of their universities or with one, one of their university. That has a kind of do it yourself toolkit. Gives you lots of ideas on how to, how to, what data to collect, how to collect it. What, how to analyze it and what kind of dashboards you could put together. But that means we have to take on the, the. The work of trying to make that happen. And that's a challenge for us right now in term, just in terms of. Capacity. I don't have anybody in my shop that could possibly take on that kind of. Work right now, but we have the resource and we're looking at it. And I'm specifically. Designing E Prosecutor with some of their ideas in mind in terms of the data that we're going to keep. The other organization that we're talking to is one called Measures for Justice. They're a national nonprofit as well and they specialize in, again. Trying to help create data dashboards and. Community engagement strategies through use of data for prosecutors. They recently completed a project with whatever county Sacramento is in. I forget the name of the county. But it's actually a rather similar county to ours and in population and so forth. And so we've started talking with them. We recently submitted a. Bureau of Justice Assistant Grant application for. A, it's called Smart Prosecution Program to see if they would be interested in. Helping us fund a dashboard creation project, community engagement project. We'll see, we'll see on that, but yes, that's, we're trying to, we're trying to not reinvent the wheel and look at whatever resources are out there.
All right. Thanks, John. Anything from the board before we wrap? We're right before 10. This has been great session. Kristy?
No, I just support what he said.
And if there's any follow up, if I, I, I'm happy to meet anytime. Commissioner Mejia, thank you for. She's been meeting with me periodically just to get herself up to speed. I really, really appreciate that. And I'm happy to meet anytime to follow up if questions come to mind or if you want to talk about any of these things more offline.
Sounds great. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys. We're adjourned.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.